You're gonna wear it?
I did, I thought you were springing it by me, so I took a bath, I promise. I did, Saturday, Saturday.
Oh, Saturday, okay.
Oh, is it pinned out? Uh-oh. Oh, that's his stuff that he did. Oh, no. We each got one, or? Okay, we all, we all got this one? Okay, okay. It's not like, okay, you, we're good. He didn't ask me, so I don't, I'm assuming. Oh, not me.
Alright, everybody, I call to order this August fourth, twenty twenty five, joint meeting of the Friendswood City Council and the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust. And announce that each has a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mike Ross of the Church of Christ, Friendswood, Texas. And not be confused with Councilmember Michael Ross. Pastor, over to you.
Thank you. Please pray with me. Holy Lord, with humility and gratitude, we come before your throne of mercy and grace. Thanking you, Father, for the gift of your presence and praying for the gift of your power. May you continue to bless our community. May each family of Friendswood be under your blanket of protection and safekeeping, compassion and care. Father, thank you for the gifts among us in our leadership, in our community, our mayor, our council, our superintendent of schools, our city manager, our police chief, our fi- our firefighters, all these people, Father, the volunteers who serve our community. We, we offer our thanks and pray a special blessing on each one of them. So may you guide our servants that are leading us with wisdom, with understanding, with insight. May you, Father, empower them with boldness and courage and assertiveness. And may you sustain them with fortitude and strength and endurance. Now, I pray, Lord, that each citizen in Friendswood will be in a path that is under the shadow of your love. And that we each walk together with a spirit of cooperation, a spirit of healing, leading to peace and hope in our community. So we come tonight with a celebration of your presence with us and thank you, Father, for your compassionate care. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
I'd like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, honor the allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state, under God, and indivisible.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Alright. Alright, item four, council comments and reports. I'll, I'll kick off. I got to do two, two things this weekend, very memorable. Saturday afternoon, I was over at Fire Station One for Chief Stan Kozlowski, passing the chief's badge over to our new fire chief, Matt Fuentes. I see Chief Fuentes in the back. Which was a, a great event. It was a lot of fun. Especially fun to hear all these these people high up in firefighting around Galveston County and even further away, I think. And there were representatives from, what would you say, chief, probably ten different agencies there? You know, at least, yeah, coming to, to sort of pay homage to, to, to cause, because what a great chief and leader he was. So, and still sticking around with us, so it's great to still have him volunteering out there. But anyway, we're, we're really proud that he turned over his chief's badge. You wearing that badge today, chief? What? How do you uniform, Brian? Talk to this. But no, that was one event, Saturday. Yesterday morning, we had the first annual Figgy Kids Triathlon here in Friendswood. So, big thank you to Rotary Club, especially Cassie McGarvey. So many, I think they had a, they had a hundred and thirty kids running in a triathlon here yesterday. They probably had about a hundred volunteers. So, people from Parks were out there, people from Keep Friendswood Beautiful were out there. And it was just an amazingly well-run event. People had a lot of fun. I was just glad I was not running. But I know those kids, well, probably from ages, well, they had eight and under was one category, all the way up to fifteen. So they had kids from all age groups. It was like a lot of fun, so. Glad that we do all these great things in Friendswood.
Nothing specific, other than I'm just glad to be here.
We are glad you're here, yes. Councilmember Branson?
I have a couple of things. So I had two grandsons running in that triathlon. They were worn out Saturday night. I don't think they had to be rocked to sleep, but they had a big time. And I think it was a huge success for the inaugural event, so really excited, glad we brought that to us, and Cassie McGarvey in particular. I did want to let y'all know our museums were open this past weekend too. It was a big weekend. And we had, at the Perry Home, and my phone went to sleep, I'm so sorry, we had one of our heirs, Bonnie Glines Watts, came and visited the Perry Home. So it's kind of cool when somebody who grew up here comes and visits our museum, and she said she used to docent. And we're gonna try to talk her into coming to talk into our docents again, but we're very honored to have her at our museum. And then I also wanted to say, I had the opportunity to go to a Bay Trant event, and we met, and I y'all know Liza Paul, she has now stepped down and retired. And Glenn Albritton, who is now her replacement, he spoke to us, and that was very good. I'm very impressed with him. I actually served with him on the Transportation Policy Council as well. And if you get a chance to meet him or hear him speak, he's very, very good. He came to us from West Texas. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember, hey.
So I would like to also second your congratulations to Chief Stan. He's done a marvelous job, and I've read some things that have been attributed to him and that he's accomplished over the years. And he's had a stellar career and a lot of respect from people, and we appreciate his service in Friendswood. So I'm glad to be back in Friendswood. I was supposed to be, well, I was, last month on an Alaskan cruise and got very sick on the second day, which ruined the cru- the cruise. But I'm very happy to be back in Friendswood, and we did get to see a few places, going up there and coming back. And I was so proud when I came back into this town. It's, it's a pretty area, and I love all the volunteerism. I'm on the committee that is putting together with, under James Tony's leadership in Keep Friendswood Beautiful, the electrical boxes. And so we came back in, and I saw some of them had been finished, and, and I'm really heck excited about that. And then lastly, this weekend, I also called Bingo, along with Mayor Pro Tim Matranga and Sally Branson, maybe some others, by the time I left, may have shown up. But at the junior high school with the new principal and some new administrators had a family day. And I love the partnerships between our, our different entities, like the school district and the city. And the school district invited the mayor to say a few words today to welcome back teachers and the city council members, which I thought was so nice. And, and I just love the cooperation, the synergy that's created when we all work together. And I'll just remind everybody that the teachers came back to work today, but the kids will be back next week, so slow down, be careful. I'm sure you all are ready because of the e-bikes and the scooters. But they may be riding those things to school next week, so be extra careful here and over in Clear Lake.
Thank you. President of Rotary, Scott Dayton, just walked in. Scott, you missed, the three of us talked how, about how great Rotary was putting on the triggy, triggy, triathlon yesterday. So I wanted to make sure you heard that, and thank you for all you had to do. Rotary does such great work in this city. I'm proud to be a member myself.
I don't have anything, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Matranga.
Right, Scott, Scott has Mayor Pro Tim, right, right. Scott, just so that you get to hear a little bit of it, I also was at the triathlon, and I was so impressed with, with the youth. I think there were, at least in one, one of the two categories, there were, I asked, there were twelve Friendswood kids in there. And I was just thinking of the days when my kids were that age, and there's no way I was gonna get them to the park for, at seven AM start of a triathlon, much less jump in that water. There was no way my, mine would have, no. But, so that was awesome to see the kids do that, see them all sprinting at the end, trying to get their times better. That was an awesome event, and I was so impressed with the youth that were there. But the main thing I, I really also wanted to talk about during this period was I wanted to recognize our animal control team and all the volunteers for an awesome shelter open house and adoption event that they held on July twenty seventh. It was a huge success at the shelter, and they adopted out eight dogs and seven cats. Those are the last numbers that I did here. And while I was there, Murad, I, you know, please push, push this one to you a little bit. I did notice that the operating hours, even though we're fully staffed at Animal Control, are still in a limited hours that are open to the public. Now, again, the animal control officers are working their normal shifts, but the shelter is only open for limited hours. And I'd like to see, come in and talk to you and your staff, appropriate staff. What can we do to open the shelter in the, you know, after five hours, some, at some point, and on, on a weekend at some point, some amount of hours? Because I think that really helps the number of animals that we can adopt and the number of hours that volunteers can come in and help out at the shelter. So anyway, it's just, it's a great, if you haven't been to our shelter, a lot of people came through just to look at the shelter. It's an awesome facility and well-run, and they're always glad to, to show it to you. That was all I had.
Councilmember Ross?
Make sure I turn mine on this time. Middle of last month, July fifteenth, we, the Parks Department had a senior barbecue fundraiser, and they did an outstanding job of raising funds for the seniors program. They sold three hundred and thirty plates as of the last count when I walked out the door that day, so I think that's a lot of food to prepare. And the Parks and Recs Department did all the preparation. They cooked all of the brisket for those sandwiches, which many of the seniors were asking me, what restaurant catered this? And I got to explain to them it was your staff that did it. So congratulations on our very successful event. I, I have a lot of fun at those. I, you know, been to two now, not to barbecue, but just these fundraisers with the seniors, and I just adore hanging out with the seniors. I think they're some of the biggest and brightest jewels of our city. That note is, lends me back into volunteerism last week, and you're gonna hear me talk about it, I think, a few more times as the, the rest of this year goes on. We have a few committees that are still shy. Some people, I've been talking to the Parks and Rec, I think Fourth of July Committee is a little shy. Keep Friendswood Beautiful is a little shy, so let's keep finding volunteers. If you're really interested in some of the bigger and brighter events that make Friendswood the special place it is, please volunteer. I think I talked to Letty last week, and we'd had three people since the last council meeting volunteer for various positions. I think two more have volunteered. So if we can get five a, a month, that would be incredible. And just know that your time and talent are be well put to use. Thank you.
Excuse me?
I'm done.
Did you hear that, Rhonda? Revenue Street. Get these guys cooking barbecue. Three hundred and thirty plates in one day. Good job, Michael. Okay, item five, public comment. To comply with provisions in the Texas Open Meetings Act, neither the city council nor the Board of Trustees or the, Board of Trustees for the joint meeting with the Employee Benefit Trust may deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council and the board will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff to place an item on future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with the council's rules of decorum. Everyone desiring to present comments should have completed a public hearing comment card before you're submitted it to the city secretary. You'll have three minutes, and then buzzer will go off. Give your name and address for proper record. So, Don Johnson?
Thank you very much. Probably most of you know I'm Don Johnson, and I live on Myrtle Wood, which is right across the creek from where they're doing the great big detention basin project. So it's pretty easy for me to, you know, keep track of that and watch that, and, you know, I've really enjoyed watching them dig down and start to create a basin. And a few days ago, I was a little bit of a panic as I got up and everything was quiet. I didn't hear any of the trucks, the bulldozers. I didn't hear anything going on over there. So I ran over there real quick, and lo and behold, there wasn't much going on. Came back home and sent off some emails real quick, trying to find out what's going on. And fortunately, I found out, well, no, the mass grading contract is coming to a close. That part is done. Now we just need to decide, you know, where do we want to go from here? Do we want to have a wet bottom basin? Do we want to dig some more, you know? What kind of capacity do we want? And they're gonna have a meeting here sometime this month. I'm not sure if they've got a final time for it, but they're gonna, you know, have everybody in, and I guess they'll have the city manager, and I don't know, have the mayor, I don't know who all, who all is gonna be coming to that. But. I am certainly hoping that it is decided at that meeting that we maximize the storage capacity of that basin. I know a lot of people just don't like detention basins. It's, you know, they're costly, they don't do a lot of good. But I'll, I'll tell you one thing about them. You've gotta have them if you're ever gonna do conveyance. Because the only way you can do conveyance is if you can point back and say, we've mitigated the additional water that we're putting in to the creek up to the hundred-year low, and that's exactly what Harris County Flood Control did with the Big Mud Gully Project, which was nothing but a conveyance project. And when I brought it up with them, they said, oh, we mitigated the extra water that we're dumping down at Timber Creek Golf Course with the South Belt Detention Basins that we put in. I guess they forgot that, you know, it was Galveston County and the City of Friendswood and the Drainage District that contributed, I don't know, ten, twelve, fourteen million dollars to that project, so I guess they're using our detention credits, you know, to send more water in under the creek. But anyway, we need the detention basin on Dixie Farm Road maximized. We also need the Whitcomb property. We need the detention basins there, backing up a little bit. We need Black Hawk to have a detention basin, which we really haven't gotten in yet. And of course, we've already done the Imperial Estates Detention Basin. We need all those basins so we can legitimately start a conveyance project. We never could do the city plan, which was to shelve two hundred feet on both sides of the creek and get on down. Well, I mean, not only because of cost, but because we didn't have anything that would increase the amount of water going downstream. And we didn't have any mitigation for it. We didn't have any detention basins that we could point to incredibly say, look, that's what we need. So anyway, I, I, I hope that y'all are successful when you go to that meeting with the partners of the Dixie Farm Road Detention Basin and convincing them that we need to maximize that site and then move on down the creek, maybe to the Black Hawk site and, and do that. Maybe we can get the state to help us with that one too. So anyway, I want to thank you all for helping keep me up to date on that, and if there's anything I can do, I'm always available to try and, you know, move those projects along. Thank you.
Right. Jennifer Maxwell. President of our Volunteer Fire Department.
Yes, and city resident.
City resident, wow.
My name is Jennifer Maxwell, Sixteenth and South, no, Whittaker Drive, one thousand South Friendswood. I can't get that out of my head. I wanted to take a moment to address the mayor and council members and to formally introduce our new fire chief. So on behalf of the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department, I'd like to take that moment to introduce Chief Matt Fuentes. So Chief Fuentes began volunteering with our department in twenty seventeen. He was promoted to assistant chief in twenty twenty. And so a lot of his duties as assistant chief included our training capacity, as well as our overall operations of our fire department. He is also a career firefighter and currently a captain for eighteen years with the City of Houston, or Houston Fire Department. He's also a program director for the Volunteer Fire Academy down at the College of the Mainland, so that's very important to our organization. He has a degree in fire science, associate's degree in fire science. He is a certified fire executive through the Texas Fire Chiefs Association. He's recently been accepted into the Mays Business School at Texas A&amp;M for the spring to serve or, or to go to the Fire Service Chief Executive Officer Program. He is a master firefighter with ten other certifications through the Texas Commission of Fire Protection. He's been married for eight years to his beautiful wife, Brandy, who is also a member of our Volunteer Fire Department. So with no further ado, I'd like to yield my time over to Chief Fuentes and let him say a few words to you.
Chief Matt Fuentes.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Councilmembers, how are you? I just had two quick comments, really quickly. One, I just wanted to introduce myself, so that way you had a face to put with the name that you, that you may hear. And just give you a little bit about myself. And then also, the other one is I wanted to share my vision for the fire department. Vision being that I wanted to continue to maintain the professionalism of the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department. In my time there, we've done everything from put out small grass fires to flooding events of Hurricane Harvey. And the faith that you have and the citizens have in our fire department to respond to the call has not been lost on me, and I feel very, very strongly about it. So continuing forward, I do wish that we continue that professionalism and continue to meet all of your expectations that you may have. If you ever need me at any point in time, please give me a call. My phone is always on. I just need to make sure that I got my name, your name in my phone, so that way I don't think it's a telemarketer again. I'm sure everyone's been getting those, right? And then, and I'll answer your phone call anytime, day or night. If you ever need anything, have any questions, I'm here to help in any way, shape or form. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
The other members of the fire department, stand up real quick, just so people can see who all is here. We got an assistant chief, Crumbus, his wife, who also is a volunteer, got Jennifer, we already saw back there, so thank you all for coming out.
Thank you so much.
Right, Matt Lowe.
Good evening, council. My name's Matt Lowe. I'm actually with Waste Connections, the trash company. Just wanted to introduce myself to the council. This is kind of my homecoming back to Friendswood. I grew up in Friendswood, graduated, twelve-year senior, class of oh-six. One of four kids that graduated from Friendswood High School. Came down to Waste Connections Alvin Yard back in January. And I've been trying to, you know, trying to get things straight out there. I know, I know we've had questions on trash service. I'm sure we've had some, some complaints, some, some compliments and stuff. And I, I just want to let y'all know, I'm not, I'm not one for hiding behind anything. So I wanted to come tonight, introduce myself and pass out my business card, so y'all have my email address and cell phone number. Y'all can give me a call, or if y'all have any questions about the, the trash co- contract or the services we provide, don't hesitate to reach out, email, cell phone, anytime.
Alright. Item six, special recognition and acknowledgements, present the City of Friendswood Five Star Spirit Award for the first quarter of twenty twenty-five to Jose Rionas, the Assistant Streets and Drainage Superintendent in the Public Works Department.
Mayor and council is Jose, works his way up here. I just want to take a moment and to recognize him. As y'all know, the Five Star Spirit Award is our employee of the quarter award, so to speak. Jose's been with us since December of twenty twenty, and much like everybody else in the organization, it didn't take long for him to buy into the Friendswood culture. So on our January twentieth or so, we had a stranded motorist that had been waiting on the side of the road for over an hour for AAA to stop by and help them change their tire. Jose, going from one job to another, noticed this, noticed the stranded motorist and stopped and helped change their tire despite the fact that he had other things that he needed to take care of that day. We appreciate Jose for everything he does. It's not unique to have Friendswood employees go out of their way to help residents, but we want to take this moment, recognize him and all that he does for Friendswood. Thank you, Jose.
Alright, item seven, committees or special reports. A, receive the Community and Economic Development Committee Annual Report. Community and Economic Development Committee's annual reports attached to our Zen Agenda for Council Review, no in-person report. Anybody have any comments, questions about?
I was just gonna say, this is, I'm the lead on to this group, and this is one of the committees. We are down a couple of members, so we encourage those who might be interested in Community and Economic Development Committee to please put in your application, your volunteer app. We welcome that.
Okay, since there's no further comments, we'll consider the report received and move on to the next item. Receive the Community Development Department's quarterly update, presented by Community Development Director Aubrey Harbin.
Good evening. And so just a quick update on the department. Lots going on. So since we, since I gave the last update, one of our inspectors, Robert Cantu, he's actually our newest building inspector. He's been with us for a while, but he just received his ICC Residential Combination Inspector Certification. So that is a combination of four exams that is in the area of building, electrical, mechanical and plumbing. And then I got my CFM. I think we announced these before, but it just happened in the quarter, so just reminding you. And then Diana and Christian attended the annual ESRI conference in California. It's held in San Diego with our ESRI membership. Two registrations to that annual conference are included in our membership. So they got to experience that. I think it's a big conference. It's nationwide. There's a lot of attendees there. But I think they got some good information and kind of where GIS is going and some exciting information. And Ruben also was able to spend two weeks in Kerrville assisting the City of Kerrville with their public water supply. That was part- That was part of the Texas A&amp;M Public Works Response Team. So he was grateful to be able to provide that and participate with that city. We've also hosted ten DRC meetings. We are still...
Aubrey, could you say what the DRC stands for for the people in the audience?
Yes, sorry. Development Review Committee. So this is a standing meeting that we have scheduled every Wednesday morning. So anybody who purchases property, who wants to develop property, just has general questions, we encourage them to come in. They're no charge. They're informal meetings. We'd rather meet with people and give them information on the development process before they purchase property, hopefully, just so they can know what they're getting into. And we kind of walk them through the development process. So building and fire codes are still kind of hanging out there. Fire Marshal's Office still has not received the code commentaries. So that's being pushed back a little bit. Hopefully, maybe by the end of the year, we can get that moving. We are reviewing state legislative changes and the effective dates that affect our department and other departments that we work with. So we'll make sure that we're up to speed on all the state laws. We're also reviewing and updating insurance requirements for contractors and property owners and looking at hiring, having a third-party consultant on standby in case another flood or anything for damage assessments. I think the theme has changed how they're operating in some of those roles and will not be providing those services in future events. So we just need to be prepared and have someone there to help us. We did receive the grant from the GLO. We have a possible vendor selected, so we're gonna go in through that process. Hopefully, we'll have something before you on the August twenty-fifth meeting to formalize that contract and get going on that project. We have our newest CDD employee, or GIS tech, Christian Moreno. He is a recent A&amp;M graduate. He started with us on June sixteenth, and his degree is actually in urban and planning. But he has been able to hit the ground running. He had a little bit of work experience with City of College Station. And so he has a little bit of familiarity, and we appreciate him being here.
He's already been to San Diego, so.
Yes, right off the bat. So just some numbers with our GIS, some of our most popular mapping tools. Our public hub, this is a number of like clicks that our different webpages get. So the public hub was created in 2020 and has had over two hundred thousand clicks. Our interactive map, the internal one, is a little over, almost eight thousand. And the, our story map is gaining popularity with over five thousand clicks. And then the interactive map is our public, on our public hu, it's on the public hub, so it's a sub click. But there's a lot of information on our public hub that residents can access. You can search your address. And from that, you can see your trash and recycle days. You can see what school districts you're in, different like voting precincts and things like that. So it's a lot of great information. You can look up your flood zone information. There are PDFs of like large format maps, if any organizations ever need those. And there's different subject maps for residents. So lots of great information out there.
Aubrey, I had not looked at it in a while, and I was just very impressed with all the information. I just kept scrolling, looking at this one. And I mean, so people that are interested, well, what's being built over here or over there? You have pictures, and you have summaries of those major commercial developments on there as well. So there's a lot of great information. If you haven't been to it, or haven't been to it in a while, you ought to go.
Thank you. So this is the story map. The new project, the one new commercial project we have permitted since the last date is the Sterling Falls Venue that's under construction at the twenty-six hundred South Friendswood Drive. So that one is underway. I think Friendswood Community Hospital is nearing completion, too. So I went and got an updated picture of that one, just for this presentation. Hopefully, they'll have our little hospital open soon. As far as Planning and Zoning Commission, we've had five meetings. Things have been a little bit slow. We've had one site plan, four site plan amendments, and just three Platts. Zero zone change recommendations, and then two zoning ordinance amendments. And as far as the commission goes, the, with the comp plan project, we'll shift our focus to working with that vendor once we get that project going. The zoning ordinance update will be included with that project. The GLO, as part of our grant, requires that you update the zoning ordinance to match the comprehensive plan. So that'll be included with that. We have a couple, a couple of other little small things we're working on. And then, like I said, the Texas legislative changes. One of the changes they made was our zone change signs. They established a minimum size for the signs now. So we're, we've already got a new template made, and they've also like stipulated that the sign has to remain until council makes the decision on that request, which we usually did before, but it's actually in writing now. So just going through those meticulous changes and making our updates. That's all I have. Any questions?
Congratulations on your certification.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Tell Robert congratulations, too.
I will. Thank you very much.
I also like that website that you can go to and see all the projects. That's really, really nice.
Oh, good. Yeah, it is very helpful. Thank you.
Hey, item A, work session topic. Receive and discuss an update regarding the City of Friendswood Capital Improvement Projects presented by Director of Engineering, Hill Arias.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Hill Arias, Director of Engineering. I'm here to present the CIP update for you guys. I'm gonna start with a little bit of good news for you guys. We have some light at the end of the tunnel now with the Blackhawk Phase II-B. We're finally gonna be able to get that first half, the west half of Blackhawk completed. We've come to a resolution with Liberty Mutual. We should be able to get the contractor out there within the next week or two. It sounds like he's ready to go on that. And just wanted to share that we'll be incorporating the second half of that project into the II-C, the final phase of the Blackhawk project. And then we'll come back here in a couple of months to complete that other portion. Give people a little bit of a break from the construction, and then we'll, we'll get after it after that.
Hill, sorry.
So II-B is expected to be complete by when?
So II-B will be completed. The contractor's telling us he's thinking he can do it, knock it out within eight weeks, closer to six weeks if he has some good weather cooperating with him.
After the original contractor, you know, couldn't, couldn't finish.
Correct.
This is, it'd be nice to get this behind us. And one follow-up, and that's in the II-C, you're expecting it to be complete next year sometime, or when?
Yeah, it'll be... Well, if, if we, if it's next year, it's gonna be late next year, more than likely, we're probably looking at early 2027 before we get that all completed, so.
Okay, because of the break you're talking about having.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I was just gonna add one comment. We can't advertise II-C until II-B is complete because we need as-built drawings to reflect what's physically been completed before we can advertise for another contractor to bid on the last final phase.
Thank you. That makes sense.
So Hill, one of the things residents in that area had asked me about is if you could put up some form of temporary speed limit in a construction zone type notices, because people are kind of going by these single lanes racing at still thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. And so maybe that's something we can consider is to
Yeah, definitely.
find a way to reduce the traffic speeds as we get to those construction zones, kind of like they do on the state level. I know it's a little more complicated than I, than it sounds, but I, I do get quite a few comments about how they're coming by those construction zones that, you know, faster, they're not even slowing down at all, much less, you know, maintaining speed limit, so.
We'll look into that. We'll address that.
Appreciate it.
If I may, I just wanted to thank the city for, even before we had the agreement with Liberty Mutual, that you did make our residents there, along the boulevard, their driveways were accessible and things like that. So it made things where it was usable and not so terribly inconvenient like the contractor left it. So I just want to thank city staff for taking care of that for our citizens.
Next update I have for you is on the twenty-four-inch Clear Creek Waterline Crossing Project. This is part of the, a larger overall project to extend a twenty-four-inch line to the high school, to the elevated storage tank at the high school. So this is the first phase of that project, and the contractor got started over near FM-518, South Friendswood Drive. They're working their way over to the east. If you've been to the Activity Center here anytime lately, you've noticed the roads all torn up there. They're telling us that as soon as they can get that pipe down, they'll start working on getting that asphalt back down. So hopefully, we don't have to deal with a muddy situation there for too much longer. So they're working their way back to, towards the creek. They'll cross underneath the Clear Creek. And then eventually, they'll end up at Blackhawk to tie into a water line that is going to be constructed as part of a II-C. So all little pieces of the puzzle coming together here. Next is this tank project, Water Surface Water Plant Number One. This is a really recent picture for you guys. In there, you might notice that there's a tower. That's the automated metering infrastructure tower that the city has to get automated readings from water meters across the city. That was one of the first things that had to get tackled, was for it to get moved to the center of that site right there. And now that that's out of the way, it'll clear up the area for the contractor to be able to start building a much larger ground storage tank there. You'll see on the picture, the light blue and gray tank there, that's the old tank that is getting replaced. It did not receive very good passing, or very good ratings in a inspection that the city had. It was structurally deficient, and that's the reason it's getting replaced. So we're going, we're going through the rest of the summer with that tank in place to help increase our water capacity at that location. And then, once the summer's passed, probably in the winter, we'll start seeing that getting taken down. The next update I have for you is on the Unified Planning Work Program. Some of you may have noticed that Fourth of July at Stevenson Park, there was a pop-up event. The HJAC was present there to get feedback from community members on the active transportation plan that is underway current. So this active transportation plan is taking a holistic view of the city to determine any places where there might be opportunities to improve accessibility, improve connectivity, and improve safety for both bicyclists and pedestrians across the city. So far, sixty-eight community members have, and I think we actually have a little bit more now, but sixty-eight community members have participated in the project survey, which is available online. And Councilmember Branson, I know you've been helping get the word out there, and I appreciate the, all the help on that. We've got a couple of key meetings coming up, a steering committee meeting and a stakeholder meeting, where we'll be sharing some information to some key groups here in the community on that active transportation plan. And on the Parkway Corridor Study, not much of a update there. They are still working on finalizing the, the product, making the alignment match what has been shared with us in some of the developments that are ongoing. And we should be seeing that here pretty soon, the final product. And we'll be sharing that with you guys once done. On the carryover spending projects that the HJAC has, unfortunately, I don't have much of an update for you guys. But I can tell you that there's been some survey work underway that TechSot has been doing at the intersections that are mentioned in that slide right there. At Bay Area Boulevard and Winding Way, FM-518 and Sunset, you'll see some intersection improvements there. We're working with TechSot and with HJAC to help try to get that pushed along. But right now, that effort is really moving at the speed that TechSot can manage on that.
Hill, when you mentioned in existing right-of-ways, how, how, how are, how are they going to put in these new turn signals and that sort of thing, just by restriping? Are we actually going to see some actual widening at turns?
It'll be a combination of, of... By the time, all the work is done on this, because we have a 2026 carryover, and I don't have a slide on that. I don't think so. But you'll see some right-hand turns going in at FM-518, 528 as well. That's not part of this phase. Part of this phase is gonna be some striping at that intersection, and they'll be optimizing the light sequencing.
I just don't want it to be a Band-Aid. This, these intersections need to be widened. And there also needs to be some improvement, say at 2351 in Sunset. I finally convinced my wife to wait like everybody else and not try to turn right to go on Sunset like she's not supposed to do. And now she's waiting. But we need to widen these areas so that people can get out of the way of other people, so they can get on through. And, and I'm not sure this is just not a Band-Aid. That's, that's what I'm not seeing.
Okay.
At, at some of the intersections, there will be a physical widening of the roadway.
Yeah, okay.
At 518 and 528, it can be accomplished geometrically by adjusting some of the striping without reducing the lane width. So where the striping, where you're not supposed to cross, that can be removed to allow for greater turning movement and adjusted accordingly. But TechSot is looking at this, and we'll make sure that this is not a, a simple, it will, it is a Band-Aid to some extent, but it will be more effective than what you're, what you're thinking right now.
I, I really do. I hope, I hope, I hope it's more than just a Band-Aid.
Yes, sir.
So Hill, in that regard, where are they at on their engineered drawings? At the sixty percent level, I would assume, if they're pretty much going this route?
I don't think they've, they're anywhere near the thirty percent level.
Oh, so they're really?
They're just out there surveying last month, so.
They got a ways to go, then.
Yeah, they've got a ways.
But they do have to let construction before that deadline on the screen of December 2026. And construction should not take that long. If, if, there's not a lot of physical improvements there aside from striping at this particular intersection, then it should be able to achieve it in a few weeks, once they let that contract.
And what you see here on the screen is projects that were recommended to the city in the 2019 Citywide Traffic Study. These were low-hanging fruit that the consultant at the time felt like the city could approach TechSot to get these done.
Twenty nineteen, and we're rolling into 2026 with the infrastructure that we have in 2016, fourteen, thirteen, twelve. Okay.
I, I will add, though, despite us not being in the driver's seat, no pun, pun intended, this is $2.6 million worth of projects that the City of Friendswood is not having to pay. this is $2.6 million worth of projects that the city of Friendswood is not having to pay funds towards, so I am grateful for that effort that Hill and his team have done with HGAC to make this a reality.
Yeah, Hill, we're not, we're not, nobody is casting any dispersions at you, I think the frustration probably lies more with Tech dot, not necessarily even HGAC in this regard. Tech dot's behind on so many projects across the state, and talk to your state legislators, folks, there's your, there's your political moment, get, get out and start talking to the state legislators about Tech dot, they need to get on with the business of doing their business.
Okay, and this last slide right here, same thing, we're pending a advanced funding agreement with Tech dot on it, and we've had some communication with them, fortunately, in the past week, so there's a little bit of movement, we're going to follow up on that, make sure that they're staying on top of it. The great thing about the Friendswood Parkway E-phase, which I have on this screen right here, is there is no local contribution to the effort. What is entailed in the E-phase is some environmental work, some Phase 1 type stuff, and some preliminary engineering on Friendswood Parkway. So what the HGAC is looking at doing would result in engineered plans for the Parkway all the way to FM 2351. From 2351 northwards, that's going to be a Brazoria County project. We are coordinating with Brazoria County on that, on where exactly that intersection's going to happen. Fortunately, that's another HGAC project that Brazoria County is a part of, so that helps facilitate things a little bit.
Well, some of that is actually in Brazoria County, that whole blue line is not in the city limits of Friendswood, so Brazoria County, they need to be talking about what, what they're, I know where we kind of stand with getting this.
So they are, you are correct, and Brazoria County is in communication with HGAC and Tech dot in that regard. The segment from 2351 north to 1959 was the highest-ranked regional project in the metro area, that's slated to start construction in 2033, which sounds like a far-off timeframe, but as Councilmember Grifon just noted, six years goes by pretty quickly.
And I, I do want to applaud the city of Friendswood, because I really don't know how we widened 528. To this day, when I drive over on 528, and I know how congested it is, I don't know how we ever got that done for eight or nine years, I've been sitting here going, oh my gosh, we can't get Tech dot to do what we need to get done, just to widen 2351. What you all did to accomplish 528 is a miracle, because could you imagine what driving to drive through Friendswood would be like on 528 right now, if we got held up like this all the time? So no, I applaud y'all, Hill, I applaud you, but my gosh, it really is a frustrating exercise, it's like fingernails on a chalkboard.
So the thing about this also is, these are all funds that are, have been provided by the US Federal Highway Administration, and anytime there's any federal funds involved, that's going to include all sorts of public meetings and environmental reports, and somebody's checking off that somebody else checked off, and so.
Got to check the boxes.
Got to check the boxes, so.
It just doesn't seem to add, some lights and re-striping at 528 and 518 would cost that much, so it would be an easy thing to fix and have a huge impact, that's the frustrating part. It's not widening roads, it's not shutting down roads, it's just adding lights in a turn lane.
The engineering work's going to be more expensive than the actual.
So the engineering work for that intersection alone is about $43,000. A lot of it's going to come into play with the alignment of the signal heads to coincide with the lane assignments themselves, because state and engineering, state law and engineering practice stipulates certain, certain geometrical alignments in order to achieve the turning movements and make sure that intersection's safe to navigate. So that project alone is about 400 and something thousand dollars, the engineering will be $43,000 on it.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I wish I could, I'm going to take that back, I'm going to take that back, but I have noticed some Tech dot re-striping and reconfiguring, and I'm wondering who's doing all that, because on Highway 3, I was sitting in a left-turn lane, and the lane, the cars coming towards me were coming right towards me, and the lane turned as it went through that intersection at Bay Area Boulevard, and I noticed at 518, heading from here towards HEB, there is a turn also, and at dusk, you know, people aren't familiar, so I'm questioning that.
And those are temporary Band-Aids, that's why Tech dot's taking a little bit more deliberate and intentional design considerations in mind when they're working on this intersection, because again, you don't want to confuse driver expectation, because that leads to what you get conflict points and accident potentials.
I've had that same moment of panic, though, also.
But just confirm, you were in the correct lane.
I was in the correct, that time, that time. You know, some reflective, most things are called, would be nice.
Before we leave that one last slide, that is a very complicated section of roadway as far as who's building what and funding it. Is there a way we could get that slide with an updated version, like kind of you discussed in our meeting, that shows this is being by Partner A, this is being built by Partner B, because that is the most complex three-mile piece of roadway I've ever seen as far as who's building what, it's got a lot of moving parts.
We can definitely do that, just as a matter of, for the benefit of the council. Similarly, the other section from 528 to League City was built in very much the same fashion. Just speaking anecdotally, from 528, about half the way up to Chigger Creek is being built by Castle Biosciences, part of the TERS development agreement we have in place with them.
And that's full four lanes, correct?
Four, four lanes at the intersection that's transitioning down to two lanes.
Okay, so it does a neck down before you get to the crossing?
And then that section from where Castle stops to over Chigger Creek to Wilderness Trails is being built by Galveston County as part of their bond program that recently passed this last November, from Wilderness Trails.
Which is awesome, I applaud that, too, and I applaud the residents of Friendswood who got out and voted for the bonds and the drainage bonds, I really do applaud them for that, because that's going to help us.
Yes, sir. The segment from Wilderness Trails just past Castlewood, which will have a gate on it per the settlement agreement this past summer, will be built by Tanos as part of the Wilderness Trails Estates Project, and then from that stopping point to our county line, it will be built by Jerome Karam as part of the Falling Leaf Ranch Estates Project, and then from that point to FM 2351 will be built by HGAC.
So when, when it necks down after Castle Biosciences to two lanes, is it going to continue as two lanes for all those sections, or is it going to be four for everything west, or north of the bridge?
So at Wilderness Trails north towards Brazoria County, it'll be four lanes the whole way. Much like we did with Whispering Pines, much like we did with Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, which is now Friendswood Parkway, was built as two lanes for sections of it before funding was available to complete the remaining two lanes.
So I'm assuming the development of the remainder of the Castle Biosciences adjacent piece would be done by a future developer?
Correct, which will have capacity in the TERS, because they're technically within the TERS, and if they choose not to do a development agreement with us, then they couldn't benefit from the revenue generated.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, Mo, those updates you give us weekly on the TERS projects, maybe you could just put a sentence in there about, you know, about the, who's paying for that road, that section of the road at whatever time.
Yes, ma'am, and HGAC is a backstop to all of this, so if for whatever reason the development gets stalled, HGAC's preliminary engineering and environmental will help us move the project forward and get funding from the Federal Highway Administration if need be.
That's great.
Thanks, Hill.
Thank you.
Great presentation. All right, item nine, municipal budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. It's 2033, before you know it, Robert.
It will.
So hopefully you're around.
Yeah.
All right, item A, receive and discuss a presentation regarding the city of Friendswood proposed 2025, 2026 municipal budget from Finance Director Ron DeBlosses.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight to present to you the FY26 proposed budget. It was delivered to you on Thursday, July 31st, prior to the August 1st deadline set by city charter, and before I get started, I'd like to remind you that we can make changes to the proposed, to the proposed budget up until adoption. We'll start off with the vision statement of the city council, you adopted this on July 1st of 2024. Your vision statement is what guides us throughout the budget process. By aligning the budget with the vision, informed decisions can be made that contribute to long-term and short-term objectives. This alignment also aids in resource allocation and goal setting. We're going to start off with our key budget drivers. Personnel costs are up 3.2 million from prior year budget, this includes the full impact of the FY25 salary survey that we did, as well as a 2.75% merit increase, and then the new FTEs that were submitted by department directors through decision packages. Vehicle insurance is up about 27%, and real and personal property insurance has increased about 14%. We've also included deferred maintenance of $500,000 in the budget, again this year, to establish that reserve for our aging infrastructure, our buildings and our equipment.
And I applaud the council for continuing to keep that budget in mind and behind us in here. We all know what happens when we, it'd be easy to say, hey, we could have a lower tax rate, we just defer maintenance, and we don't put anything in the budget for that, but that's not the smart thing to do, and we all have agreed to that, and so I applaud everybody for continuing.
Sometimes paying later is a lot more money than paying it down and stopping.
It's always more money if you wait, so continue.
Okay, the FBFD contract has increased 80,000 this year, and they also have some capital needs for an ambulance and a ladder truck, and those items have been approved by city council, so we have some financing arrangements that we're going to bring to you for approval, so those estimates for those financing arrangements are in here as well. And then we have other decision packages and forces at work that you'll see as we go throughout the slides. So total, total proposed revenue in all funds is 116.8 million, that's not just the general fund and the water sewer fund, that's all funds. Approximately 40% of the overall revenue budget is taxes, that's property taxes, sales tax, and franchise taxes, and then another 27% is the use of fund balance, our retained earnings for, to complete capital projects.
Could you go, I'm sorry, I was about to say something, oh, use of fund balance and retained earnings is obviously a large part of that, of that revenue, could you go, just explain that one more level? It took me a while to make sure I got it.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure everybody else in the public.
Okay, so as, as we complete projects, the money that has come in from like bonds or grants, that's sitting in fund balance, so then that's appropriated to the expenditures to use that, so we kind of look at it as revenue to balance the budget.
So it's projects that are already being completed or getting completed?
Yes.
And the money's out there, and it's just now flowing in to offset the expenses, kind of thing?
Yes, sir, it's sitting in fund balance.
Just making sure we're all saying the same thing.
Yes, yes, the bonds have already been issued.
Looking at that as revenue really blew my mind, I was like, wait, that's an expense.
And that's, that's a function of our financing policy, we have to close out the books from the prior fiscal year before the new fiscal year, so then it's recorded as revenue for the next fiscal year.
Right.
Okay, charges for services consist of 21%, which includes utility fees, parks and rec fees, as well as EMS charges. Intergovernmental revenue represents 6% of the total revenues and includes federal and state grants, as well, as well as our inter-local agreements, for example, our school resource office agreement with FISD. Total proposed expenditures in the budget is 116.8 million, and that's all funds, again. Of that amount, 45 million is related to capital improvements from general obligation bonds and grant funds. Public safety is about 19% of the total expenditure budget, and that's police and emergency services. Public works is about 12% of the total budget, and that's water and sewer utilities and operations and contracted services for purchased water, water purification, and wastewater treatment. Debt service is about 11% for principal and interest payments for general obligation and revenue bonds previously issued, and then the general government.
Right, that, that has stayed pretty constant, hasn't it, 11%?
Yes, sir.
For debt service, even though as we've gone up, it's still stayed around 10% to 11% of the total.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. General government makes up about 9% of the expenditure budget, and that includes city manager's office, city secretary's office, city attorney, finance, human resources, information technology, communications, and municipal court. Also included in general government is property liability and windstorm insurance premiums. Parks and Recreation and Facilities is about 5% of the total expenditure budget, and then the remaining 5% consists of community development, engineering, library, and vehicle replacement. Here we compare the FY26 proposed budget to the FY25 adopted budget and the FY24 actual expenditures. You can see the large increase in personnel and benefits that we previously discussed. Personnel expenses represent about 69% of the total budget for the general fund and about 25% of the total water and sewer operating budget. The large increase in capital expenditures is a result of grant and bond projects that will be completed in fiscal year 26, and then in FY24, the large increase in services related to Hurricane Barrel.
Just to note on that page, you'll notice under services, the drop from the blue bar down to the orange and gray bar, that was a function of bringing EMS in-house, it was previously a contract service to the FBFD, since it's an announced function, it's no longer recorded as a service.
I see that the debt service went up a little bit year over year, when I looked into it, it looked like it was really on the utility, water and sewer rate, water and sewer revenue bonds, does that sound about right?
Yes, sir, so we'll have an increase this year in the water and sewer on those bonds, as well as in the tax debt service, as a result of these two financing agreements that we keep bringing up for capital equipment, and then that ladder truck for the FBFD.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going to narrow, narrow our focus to the general fund, the city's main operating fund. The proposed budget includes revenue of 45.9 million, that's an increase of about 4.1 million from the fiscal year 25 adopted budget. The primary increases are property tax revenues up 1.7 million, this does not include the property tax revenue in the tax debt service fund, and there's an increase in sales tax revenue of 1.4 million, which is based on our, our current year projections, and then the inter-fund transfer from the water sewer fund is projected to increase 500,000 to cover indirect costs. In the general fund, 80% of the total revenue is generated from taxes, about 52% is property taxes, 23% is sales tax, and then 5% is franchise taxes. Note that the half-cent sales tax for streets improvements and economic development is recorded in separate funds, it's not included in the general fund. And then the other 20% of revenue is charges for services, which is parks and rec and EMS charges, fines generated from misdemeanor violations, intergovernmental revenue, the FISD contract for school resource officers, building permits, interest earnings, and then other items such as the self-tower rental income, admin fee that we collect related to garbage billings, and then we have some purchasing card rebates and donations that are recorded there. So the proposed budget was developed using a tax rate of 52.67 cents, this is about 1.2 cents, 6 cents above the current rate of 51.41 cents. We received estimated certified values from HCAD and certified values from GCAD last week, and Galveston County Tax Office certified the no-revenue rate at 50.12 cents. The tax rate used to develop the budget is approximately 4 cents below the voter-approved budget. The tax rate used to develop the budget is approximately four cents below the voter approval tax rate with the unused increment. The new estimated taxable value is approximately six point two billion, which is up three hundred and forty eight million from tax year two thousand and twenty four. New construction of about ninety seven point nine million is included in that number. And then exemptions totaling approximately two billion have been deducted. And the value of properties that have their taxes frozen because they are over the age of sixty five is one point three billion, which is about up three percent from last year.
So just to note there, the six point two billion, the growth in appraised values collectively across the Galveston County properties and Friendswood and Harris County properties are deducted by nearly two billion dollars for exemptions. It's not a bad thing, but when we say that our values have gone up, a lot of that's taken off the table before the tax rates apply to it.
And then the value excludes any captured value of the tax increment reinvestment zones. At certification, over four hundred and nine million in property values was still under protest. And then the property tax rate would provide six point six million needed for the upcoming years, geo bonds, debt service payments, as well as estimates for financing on those capital equipment purchases.
And that five hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase is roughly one point two pennies or one point one pennies equivalent of the tax rate.
And about five hundred and seventy thousand is twenty on the tax rate. Yes, and so that number also, the five hundred and ninety thousand, it's a little less than we originally estimated and that we presented at the retreat. And that's because I got I received updated quotes from some of the banks.
We not only freeze taxes in sixty five, but we also give a twenty percent homestead exemption credit.
Yes, ma'am.
That's kind of unique for other counties that don't do that, which is around ten percent.
Not every, not everyone does twenty percent. And I'm not exactly sure what the other cities do. I've seen it's ten percent, five percent.
I think Pearland does two point five percent.
Yes.
So we push as high as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
So that gives our citizens a break as well.
Correct.
And you'll see that on the next slide. No, that's okay.
Spoiler alert.
That's okay. So here we do a tax bill comparison. We took a home that was valued at four hundred and sixty thousand, and we assumed that there was no change in value from tax year two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five. And and they took and we took the twenty percent homestead exemption that the city of Friendswood allows. So if comparing the proposed, the rate that we used in the budget, the proposed rate of fifty two point six seven cents to the current tax bill, on an annual basis, their tax bill would be forty six dollars and twenty eight cents more. And then comparing it to the no new revenue rate, their tax bill would be ninety four dollars and ten cents more. But if we compared it to the voter approval tax rate with the unused increment, it's less than a hundred and forty eight dollars and ninety nine cents.
But to be clear, that is if their home appraisal did not go up from the prior year, which from what I've seen, we're still getting a lot of catch up from prior years because they've raised their appraisals up so much and they can only increase it ten percent per year. So there's a lot of catch up that's still being had. So it's not unusual for a lot of our citizens to have a ten percent increase in their appraised. I guess I'm not saying that right, not their appraised value, but their taxable value in two thousand and twenty five or two thousand and twenty six.
So it was a mixed bag this year. You may recall at the retreat, we presented you a no new revenue rate of forty nine cents. And we did receive certified values, the no new revenue rate was fifty point one one, which states that the estimated values were higher actually during the preliminary estimates as opposed to the certified. However, each individual property is unique and different. So that's why the state implemented the no new revenue rate calculation to determine that fluctuation.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And here we show the history of the no new revenue rate and the adopted tax rate. It also shows when debt was issued. The proposed tax rate of fifty two point six seven cents is shown in yellow and results in general fund revenue of twenty three point six million and six point six million in revenue in the tax debt service fund.
So one of the highlights on this screen, and I apologize, Rhonda, for interjecting quite a bit. Historically, the city of Friendswood has not raised the tax rate above the no new revenue rate unless they issued debt that the voters said, hey, we want to do these projects. You may look at the screen before you and from twenty three till present, we were recommending an increase in taxes. Well, that thirty million dollars issued in two thousand and twenty three represented the single largest bond issuance on the general fund side ever in Friendswood's history. In fact, prior to the twenty seven, twenty nineteen bond program, our largest bond program was roughly twenty four million dollars. In two thousand and nineteen, the voters authorized us to do as much as forty two million dollars. So quite a bit of debt has been authorized on the by by voters in Friendswood.
But but we did raise their tax rate for two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five, and we're proposing to raise their tax rate for two thousand and twenty six. And the last time that we did a thirty million dollars was in two thousand and twenty three.
Correct. And that and the reason for that was the thirty million just due to its sheer magnitude. We typically don't issue debt in that larger quantity on the general fund side.
You know, I've said this, I think, every year, we've talked about it. I really like the way school districts do it where they separate out their, I know we, the cities don't do it this way, but separate out the debt service because it's so transparent to people that vote for a bond. And and when we say this bond is going to cost five cents on the tax rate, which is what we advertised, I think, when we passed that bond. And we didn't, we didn't raise it five cents. So because it all gets put in the same pot and then we're all held to the no new tax revenue, the all those formulas. And so it's all poured into the same bucket. It's not separated. I think it would be so much easier. I guess that's a legislative thing, but it would be so much easier because if we're raising it a penny in something, we're still not at the five cents that we said we would need to pay those bonds back several years ago. So am I correct?
In fact, the tax rate proposed this year is the same tax rate, more or less, that we had in two thousand and nineteen when we had the bond. So not only have we not raised five cents, we've, we're, yeah, we've come back up. We dipped down, we came back up, but we're at the same rate that we had our taxpayers paying in two thousand and nineteen.
Realized values increase too.
Values have increased.
But that is a product of increased values and appraisals.
But it just, it but not really because we have not been brought a lot of the, what are they called again? The the when the when the department heads come together and and propose their budgets.
The decision packages?
The decision packages that were never brought to council because it would have required a tax increase. How many years, since I've been on council, almost every year that has happened where y'all have stopped it and said, we won't bring it forward. And I would always say, but let us, let us decide if we're going to raise the taxes to fund it. And part of that was because of the debt service, tax rate was all in that total tax rate. And so this is the first year, when I was reviewing this, the first year since I've been on council, where every one of the decision packages from our from our budget managers that said, and I love the way y'all do it. I mean, I think, I don't know if everybody knows how y'all do it. So they all get together and decide, well, you tell them because you're better at that. You know it, you do, you do it.
So one of the terms that I used to describe this budget when meeting with y'all beforehand was the term staffing true up. So those prior years when we did increase in staff, it focused mainly on public safety, on PD and on EMS in particular. Because obviously, those are two vital services in our community that the residents hold near and dear to their heart. Every year, the city of Friendswood department heads meet. They submit their their decision packages for their departments, for areas that they need to add to the service level that they currently provide, or they need to keep up with the demand that they see on their department on an annual basis. So they sit in a room, they all pitch their decision package to their counterparts across the organization. And then they leave the room and they're told to rank everybody's decision package but their own departments. That ranking is what's utilized as the priority system that's brought forth to council for adoption and the budget. But to council member Hank's point, the last several years, nothing beyond the forces at work got funded. Typically, it was simply just the forces at work. And so when we presented this budget to you, the no new revenue rate versus the current tax rate versus the proposed tax rate were so close to one another this year was an opportunity to fund those items that we had been kicking that can down the road in those other departments for a number of years. We have the ability to go up another four cents on top of that without going to the voters for approval. I am not recommending that. I will never recommend that, but I wanted you to be aware of it, that staff is still looking at this extremely from a conservative standpoint. But those demands for services, those pressures that you see when you go purchase your own goods and services outside of the city with inflation, with your grocery bills, we face those very same things here. We face the the struggle to keep employees employed here as opposed to going to another agency where they they get cost of living adjustments. Friendswood, we don't provide cost of living adjustments. So those are all things that compete for our resources when we're talking about tax rate.
I'm I'm impressed.
Okay, and here is a list of the forces at work. And if you remember, a force at work is an expenditure that results from state and local government laws and actions or market impacts. It's an expenditure that staff really can't control. I don't want to go over all of them, but there's a few of them on here where council's already approved a contract. The Axentason contract, phaser contract, the radio refresh. The fire, the fire department contract. And also you'll see that Galveston County appraisal services are, that's going up substantially this year.
So these are the things we have to fund, basically. The increase is that we have no, no control over.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
So on the next slide, we have the decision packages that are included in the proposed budget totaling two point eight million. These items are listed in ranked order. The ranking was done by department directors. Total one one time costs are two hundred and ninety thousand, and then total ongoing costs are two point seven million. The outside revenue source that you see of two hundred and eighty six thousand, that's related to the staffing positions that will be partially funded through the administrative transfer from the water sewer fund. About two point five million dollars of of the two point eight is related to personnel. And at the August thirteenth workshop, each department director will discuss their staffing needs in more detail. And then here we have the loan decision package that was not funded in the proposed budget.
I'd just like to ask if we could try to find that thirty thousand dollars because I think social media is more and more and more important. And I think if we can't find thirty thousand to help us keep that going in the right directions, because Glenda's doing a great job.
But I agree with that. I agree with that.
I think we need to find that thirty thousand, please.
And we can.
It's barbecue, just saying.
Ready to go.
James is still there.
We can, I think we can get that one in the budget.
Thank you.
So, and I'm going to steal your thunder on this one, I'm sorry. So we consistently tell you guys we're lean and mean in Friendswood. In fact, within the last five years, there were several years in which we were the lowest staffed organization from a municipal government standpoint in the entire Houston metro area. That's over a hundred municipalities. We're talking about adding sixteen full time equivalents to this year's budget. So are we still lean and mean? Well, Rhonda and her team went out and evaluated our neighbors to see how we rank. And we're still, as you can see on the screen before you, very competitive as it comes to those other agencies. One of the the struggles we have here in Friendswood is we don't have a lot of new construction. So whereas League City and Pearland have the ability to offset their growth in expenditures by basically borrowing against new construction, that's the one category that doesn't count against the no new revenue rate category. So when you have growth in in new construction, you can collect all those funds and it doesn't, it's not, you're not penalized for it. Well, other agencies have adjusted their staffing as they grew. I will say League City has not, and they're probably woefully behind the eight ball when it comes to keeping up with the growth that they see in their community. But we're still extremely well positioned when you're coming, when you compare us to other agencies from a staffing to population ratio.
Lean and friendly, I like to say.
Well, lean and friendly, yes, we're not mean, I'm sorry about that.
We're not mean, we're lean and friendly. Roger's back there smiling, lean and friendly.
And just a a side note on what Murad said regarding League City. We've looked at their proposed budget online, and it looks like they're asking for additional positions as well. We also spoke to the budget manager in Pearland, and they're estimating to add ten to twelve FTEs in their upcoming budget.
And you were saying a majority of the ones we're adding now are deferred from prior.
Deferred from the last five years, yes, sir.
So basically since COVID.
Correct.
So we've been playing catch up on, in essence, capital improvements and things like that. So we didn't have the dollars necessarily for.
So capital improvements, PD and EMS.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and then on this slide, we show the total expenditures of the general fund to be forty five point eight million. The chart shows each department's portion of the expenditure budget. The largest portion of the city's operating expenditure budget is public safety at forty nine percent, which includes police and emergency services. The next largest portion of the budget belongs to parks and rec at fourteen percent, and then public works, seven percent.
Mayor Council, just a minute.
Yes.
It's a lot of iced tea.
All right, let's shift our focus to the water and sewer fund. The total proposed revenues in the FY twenty six proposed budget for the water and sewer fund are twenty three point five million. Twenty two point six million is projected from utility fees, and that's up about one point six million from current year's budget, but in line with current year collections based on conception. This increase also takes into account a rate increase that will go into effect January first, two thousand and twenty six. The remaining nine hundred thousand is projected to come from administrative fees, interest and meter sales. On the next slide, we have the proposed expenses of twenty three point five million. If we exclude the cash call payments to the city of Houston, the expenditures in the water and sewer fund will increase approximately one point three million from the FY twenty five budget. This is primarily related to the increase in the interfund transfer to the general fund, five hundred thousand, and then an increase of about seven hundred and seventy one thousand in the transfer to the water and sewer debt service fund. And that's due to the issuance of those revenue bonds in March of two thousand and twenty five. The expenses on this slide are inclusive of two point four million in forces at work and four hundred thousand in decision packages. And these items are listed on the next slide.
I'd like to applaud Friendswood for sitting on the money that City of Houston, we figured we owed them and all the others who, which residents didn't, and now they're having to come up with that money. So thank you all for being so conservative and hanging on to the money. And now we're going to, we're going to pay it, I understand. But a lot of communities didn't do that, and they don't have it, and they're going to have to find it somewhere. So thank you all for being on top of things.
Yes, ma'am. I couldn't spend it even, Katina and Rhonda wouldn't let me spend it even if I wanted to.
I was trying to spend it.
I know you were, Robert.
I was trying to save some taxpayer money with it.
And so maybe Murad, maybe describe a little bit of what they're talking about because the general audience certainly doesn't have a clue on how that came down. Because that is a significant event that you guys negotiated out.
So I would like to take a moment and thank our predecessors. So since nineteen ninety, the city of Friendswood has had to be under subsidence regulation, meaning that we had to get the vast majority of our water resources from surface water resources and not from groundwater because there's this issue of subsidence in our area. Our predecessors had the foresight to go secure the raw water rights for our community a number of years ago. And they did it in two tranches, one in the nineties and then another in the early two thousands. In the early two thousands, there were two capital expenditures that had to be made. One to expand the southeast water purification plant and the other for the additional six million gallons of water per day to serve the community as we went to twelve MGDs, million gallons per day. Well, the city of Friendswood made their payment associated with the capital expansion of the plant. City of Houston never billed us for the raw water, additional raw water that we were obligated to pay. For the last fifteen years, we've been trying to make our payment, much to the chagrin of the co participants in the plant that didn't set aside their funds. And Houston kept saying, well, you don't have a bill or we don't see it. And then we asked something for something from them in writing to to absolve us of that obligation. They wouldn't commit to it. Well, it turns out they had made a mistake and realized, oh, crap, Friendswood and all the other co parts do owe this funding, and Houston's desperately trying to claw those funds back. Our share was roughly three and a half million dollars that we had set aside since two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. But because Houston was in such set aside since 2007 or 2008. But because Houston was in such dire straits, they asked for a settlement agreement of 60 cents on the dollar. So our obligation now is only 2.1 million instead of 3.5, meaning we get to retain 1.4 million dollars and apply that to our, towards other projects and defer the next bond issuance by that amount of money.
And I told you appropriately, I'd give you a standing ovation if we got to announce that, because I thought that was absolutely a great move on our part.
That was all staff's part, and the foresight to set aside those funds and not spend it. So I applaud staff for that.
Negotiating and continuing to push the deal where the City of Houston finally figured out they needed those dollars.
Correct. And and the reality is, water is a diminishing commodity, and it's not something you want to take lightly. We don't ever want to be in a position where not able to turn on our faucet and have clean water for our residents to consume. So.
There are other cities in the Houston area that do not have water.
Correct.
For their growth. So they're stuck, and they depend on that growth. And now they have no idea how to reconcile that. So.
Or as Trish said, they're struggling to figure out how they're going to pay for it.
Correct.
Something they already owe.
More seeing state approval to keep drilling water wells.
That's not happening.
Yeah.
Well, not in our area where the subsidence is.
All right, on the next slide, we have the funded decision packages totaling 397,000. You have merit of 2.75, and then there's that water and sewer transfer over to the general fund to cover those new positions that we're going to fund through the general fund, and then an upgrade in the Public Works Water Utilities Department of a vehicle. Then we have our next step. So tonight, we're having a budget workshop. And we plan to have another budget workshop on August the 13th. Then we will have a proposed budget hearing on August 25th. That's a special meeting. And we can either adopt the budget, you can either adopt the budget at that meeting, or you can postpone it until September 8th. And then on September 8th, we'll have a public hearing on the tax rate. And then hopefully we'll get the tax rate adopted that night. Any direction guidance is always welcomed, needed, and appreciated.
Just applaud you and your team.
Thank you.
Jennifer, Andrea, Katina, I know you guys, I don't know how you do it, amazing work and the budget that you put together. And we're just glad that we have you on our team.
We couldn't do it without the other city departments, without City Manager's Office and Council. Thank you all as well.
From Council, I want to thank you. You're always open to questions. I know Council members, myself included, come to your office with questions. You're always willing to put down whatever you're working on and tutor us and the magic that you're doing there. So thank you.
You're welcome.
For those in the audience, while you're here, this is what a budget looks like that they put together, and that's double sided. That's not single sided. And there's a lot, there's a lot to it. So thank you.
And all that paper comes out of Mayor and Council budget?
Yes, yes, sir. I'm just kidding.
If you got the color version, yes.
Joe needs four copies?
No, just one.
All right, we'll be ready. I will. I will definitely be ready to adopt this budget on the 25th, as no time like the present. Thank you very much. Okay, item 9B, consider setting a public hearing regarding the City of Friendswood Municipal 2025, 2026 Municipal Budget for August 25th at 5:30 PM in the Council Chamber, City Hall, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, 77546.
Red motion.
Any more questions?
Great job.
I would take a motion.
Motion too.
This is for the public hearing.
This is to set the public hearing.
Set the public hearing.
On August 25th. Got a motion from Councilmember Ellisore.
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem, Matranga, all in favor. All right, motion passes seven to nothing. Item 9C, receive the 2025 appraisal rolls by the Galveston Central Appraisal District and the Harris Central Appraisal District and anticipated collection rate and the excess debt collection certified by the city's tax collector and no new revenue and voter approval tax rates. Rhonda, are you going to do this?
There's, just a note, we received the certified values from Galveston County and the certified estimates from Harris County. This is a requirement by state law that y'all actually actually receive both of those roles.
All right. So we have received them. Anybody questions on the information? Thank you, Rhonda. We need you after all for that. All right, item 9D, consider approving the proposed ad valorem tax rate for 2025 fiscal year October 1st to September 30, 2026. Go ahead, Rhonda.
And so here, you're just approving to propose the tax rate. You're not actually adopting the tax rate. And just keep in mind that the tax rate that you propose, you can adopt a lower tax rate, you just can't adopt a higher tax rate.
And this is required for notice, and that's required by the state.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Before our public hearings.
Yep. Have to let the public know.
I do have one question.
Question, Mayor Pro Tem, Matranga.
During your presentation, I was letting you finish your presentation, but, you know, I've still been working with staff in my meetings and Murad about, you know, just because we can doesn't mean we should. Just thinking through the logic of, can we hold our tax rate flat? And what would that take? And it comes at a cost. Murad or Rhonda, in general, what are the major things that we might have to give up and put off or delay and to further continue to delay doing if we don't adopt this extra 1.2 cents?
So it depends on what council's priorities are. So as I stated earlier, we we submitted to council a list of priorities as ranked by department heads associated with the proposed budget. The things on this slide are forces at work. These are things that we've already contractually obligated the city to. The debt service are things that we've already contractually obligated the city to. So these are non-negotiables. However, in moving forward, if council suggests that, hey, we believe that these staffings and other departments are vital, but we still want to have a flat tax rate of 51 cents, 51.47, then staff will have to find ways of reducing the, a penny elsewhere to adjust the budget. So we may take from services, whether it's maintenance or whether it's an ongoing program to to offset that growth. As an example, in 2020, fiscal year 2020, we had to raise the tax rate another penny in order to offset the growth in debt service that we were experiencing that year. Council voted for three in favor of a tax increase, meaning four members said it was in favor of tax increase, three said it was not. However, state law stipulated that you needed five. So city staff had to go back and reduce cost by 400,000 in order to achieve that. That included cutting my salary, it included cutting two positions within the organization, and cutting travel and training that year. So if council has a desire to keep a flat tax rate and there's something in mind you want to cut, then we need that direction from you. If it's, hey, we want to maintain service levels, but we don't want to increase taxes, well, then we're going to have to have a solution that we can offset those those pressures.
Well, in my meeting with you, I kind of looked to you with that same question and said, I'd like to, your thoughts on, on, we can discuss it at another time. But I was really looking for you guys to come back and say, what's, what are we foregoing? What would we put off that we would like to do?
So even.
Do you start at the bottom of that list and just work it up?
You can, but obviously each of these, each of these items represent a vital function of the organization. Even though I say this is staffing true up across all departments, this still does include positions in PD and EMS. And so it depends on what the priorities of this organization are collectively. We don't have a choice. Unfortunately, the cost of providing services have gone up, whether it's to pay personnel or whether it's executing contract services. You may recall for lawn maintenance across the city, that doubled in in price the last three years. It went from 360,000 to over 700,000 from one fiscal year to the next. Not because we wanted it to. We have to go out to bid those services, and that's the bids that we received back. So we, a lot of these cost increases are beyond our control. So these are the priorities that staff presented as ranked by department heads. If council doesn't want to adopt a tax rate of 52 cents, then we would look to trim down this list. Or if you say everything on this list is vital and you want it, then we'd have to find somewhere in our base budget to cut. But the base budget represents our current service levels. So.
And Rhonda, you had in your slide, and maybe I should have obviously done this during your presentation, but since you're there, you had a slide that talked about what the effective cost to the taxpayers in Friendswood would be, right?
So.
At the, right at the very bottom, is that right?
So this slide represents the difference between our current tax rate of 51 cents and the proposed of 52. Just as note while we're here, though.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's here. No, you're right. It's a monthly tax bill, annual tax bill.
We're talking the difference of $3.86 on a 460,000 house. So a month, if you want to go with the flat tax rate versus the proposed. Now, if you say you want to go with the flat tax rate and you're saving the consumer, meaning me, the taxpayer, $3.86, then thank you. Obviously, that 3.86 can also goes to funding that 2.8 million dollars of backlog of needed items in those departments.
And as you said earlier, many of those items have been delayed from from prior years and pushed off as long as we can.
Correct.
Okay, I wanted just to have the conversation.
Yes, sir.
Just along that same conversation, and I know I didn't do a very good job of it at the retreat, but offsetting the ad valorem collection, the 52 cents, with recognizing the fact that over the last several years, our tax, sales tax increases have been about running about 12 and 1/2% over what we actually budgeted. I have only had about an hour and a half with our book. I did not get my book until today. So I know it was 9,200,000 2024, but we collected 10,700 and something thousand, a million five more than we actually budgeted. And this year, we budgeted, you can go and find it's 10,773,000. Well, what if we recognize the fact that every year, we're conservative on our sales tax, we're collecting, this year, we're putting in that we're going to collect 10,724,731? What if, what if we say, you know, we've always been conservative with that and say, I anticipate that we're going to collect 1.2 or 1.5 million more than that and offset that by reducing the ad valorem taxes that we collect to the flat rate? And then if we need to find other monies, we're going to be talking about the trust fund here in a minute. And we're going to be increasing some things for our employees. And we're increasing merit. And now merit last year was 600 and something thousand. This year, it's going to be 800 and something thousand, an additional 200,000. If, I'm not saying cut anything. I'm not saying cut anything. Recognize that we're probably going to collect more sales taxes than we have budgeted. Let's go ahead and and say, we're going to give the same amount of merit as we did last year and increase in the trust, that fund that we're going to talk about in just a minute, the extra insurance that we're going to give our employees. And could we find, Rhonda, the amount of pennies, just pennies? Now, I'm, I would, I've just almost mentioned two cents worth of savings. Well, 200,000, million, five, oh, one seven, so 517 or 570,000, that's a penny and a half savings.
So.
Without cutting a dime. I know, I know there's not an appetite up here from Mayor and Council to cut a single dime, but recognizing that we are probably going to collect more in sales taxes than we did last year, just like we did in 2023, just like we did in 2022. And I know we're conservative, but I think by doing so, we could give a little bit of a break to our taxpayers.
So in in that regard, one of the the biggest drivers in sales tax growth has been the same thing that's been hindering us, and that's inflation. So when the cost of purchasing goods go up, you're going to, since sales taxes are consumption-based services, you're going to collect more than, because of that inflationary influence of those figures. This year's budget projection for sales tax is considerably higher than last year's because we're recognizing that very trend that you're highlighting, Councilmember.
You you adopted the exact same amount. If if I recall, I only spent about an hour and a half.
So we've increased the budget about 1.4 million, and that's based on this current year projection. So I think what you're seeing is.
Right at what we collected last year, 10,700 and something. That's what we actually collected in 2025. Estimated.
Yes, estimated, yes, sir.
That's a general fund, but this is the overall budget revenue, and there's sales tax right at the top.
Okay.
That may not be the category.
No, that's not.
Mr. Griffin is correct. The estimate that we expect to end this year is pretty much what we project for next year, but because we are already like 1.4 million above the FY '25 budget. And so.
But we're, we're staying level. We're staying at that amount.
If we collect what we project to, we're staying level, just because that was 1.4 million already above the FY '25 budget.
Yeah, I saw it. It was quite a bit higher than what we budgeted.
I think that's what you were looking at.
That's what I'm alluding to, is, is, do you all think that it's possible that we could collect in year '26 another 1.4 million dollars in sales taxes and recognize that in our budget and reduce the amount per penny that our ad valorem collections have to make to our residents?
Obviously, you run the risk that if you don't collect that, then what do you do? And once you've already obligated those funds, then you have to cut something.
Well, that's, that's another, well, that's another conversation we can talk about, too.
And we, and we obviously have budget workshops coming up that we can have a more in-depth discussion.
Because I haven't had enough time in the book.
Yes, sir.
And I, I know that we have one that's coming up August 13th. I'll have done my deep dive then.
Yeah. And apologies on the delay in getting you the the budget. We didn't get certified values till late the 25th, so we weren't able to complete the budget. And obviously, we need to do QAQC to make sure that what you get, actually, all the numbers line up. So we can have this discussion further on the 25th, on, not 25th, the 13th.
I was just extending the conversation and just putting that out there. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is a great conversation. And what we're going to do right now is select this rate that was in this presentation, the post. Like was said, we could always lower that.
Correct.
That's just the maximum. So if you need a motion on this, Councilmember Ellisore.
Sure.
New Mayor Pro Tem?
Not yet.
New Mayor, 2B Pro Tem?
All right, Mayor, I move that the City of Friendswood proposes a tax rate of 52.6746 cents per $100 valuation. There's further commentary on here what that means, but that's the motion.
Does he have to read the rest of it? The rest of it? Yes.
All right, that rate is effectively 5.1% or 2.6 cents increase and a tax rate above the no new revenue rate of 50.1177 cents. The proposed rate is 1.26 cents more than the city's current tax rate of 51.41272 cents and 4.05 cents less than the voter-approved tax rate with the unused increment of 56.7235. Period.
I got a motion to the second. Any further questions, discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Item E, consider setting the public hearing regarding the ad valorem tax rate for 2025 on September 8, 2025 at 6:00 PM, Council Chamber, City Hall, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, 77546. Any questions, comments on this?
This is just calling the public hearing on the tax rate on September 8th.
Move to approve?
Second.
You got to read it.
That's right.
This one?
Yes, sir, at the bottom.
I move that the City of Friendswood proposes a tax rate of 52.0.
Oh.
I move to schedule a public hearing on the proposed tax rate on September the 8th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM in the Council Chambers of City Hall to afford proponents and opponents of the proposed tax increase to present their views.
I second.
Motion to the second, all in favor. Rod, you ready to talk?
I am ready to talk, but.
Item 10, City Managers Report.
I'm sure y'all have heard enough from me tonight. Three short items. As you well know, Labor Day is just around the corner, and just want to remind council of the joint Friendswood Historical Society and City of Friendswood Winter Weather Preparedness Event that will take place that day. So if you are available, and even if you're not, make yourself available, come out to, it's the Perry House, right? Perry House off of Spreading Oaks and enjoy some free ice cream and sign up for Emergency Alert and get to meet a number of our emergency preparedness and public works employees that will be out there educating the public and getting folks engaged as well as enjoying some ice cream. So.
And remember, has it, we might have some local musicians there, right?
Awesome. Is Thad Rohr, our superintendent, the musician?
Yes, Thad's going to be performing at the Ice Cream Social.
Fantastic. I can't wait to hear it. The next item I like to highlight is our police department recently gave a tour to some VIPs in the community, Congressman Randy Weber, as well as State Representative Greg Bonin. They took a tour of our new expanded public safety building and got a look at some of the cool equipment and. Uh, they took a tour of our, uh, new expanded public safety building and got a look at some of the cool equipment and programs that the police department have implemented in the last, uh, year or so. Uh, thank you, Chief Rogers, for taking the time to meet with them and showing them around. Finally, also on the P D front, uh, we recently received word that our police department is now a contract training provider as, uh, certified by T Col, our Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. This allows us to develop much, or deliver much-needed certified courses for folks seeking their, uh, T Col licenses and, uh, helps us become one of the go-to agencies to help in this region. So, thank you, Chief Rogers, as well, on this. So, that's it.
All right, great job. Item eleven, City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust Business Items. As the Board of Trustees of the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust, we will now consider items eleven A and eleven B together.
Yes, sir. Uh, very briefly, uh, as you well know, City Council is also the Employee Benefits Trust. Uh, we do this as a tax-saving measures when we go out and procure health, uh, medical and dental insurance, uh, for our, our employees. Uh, we went out for an R F P, uh, and in that process, Blue Cross and Blue Shield was the current provider that came back with a two point nine percent decrease uh, this year, thanks to the hard work of Higginbotham, our insurance broker, as well as our H R department in, in hounding Blue Cross and Blue Shield. City Council has two items on the Employee Benefits Trust, uh, agenda for approval this evening, the minutes from last year's meeting, as well as authorizing me to negotiate the final terms of that contract and bring back, uh, to finalize those, those terms.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions about these items? All right, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from trustee Branson and a second from trustee Hanks. All in favor? Motion passed. Eleven. Twelve, City Council Business Items. As the City Council will now pursue the remaining items on our agenda. A, consider authorizing the monthly transfer of funds for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six to the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust contingent upon sufficient budget appropriation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to a second, any questions? All in favor? Right, item B, consider authorizing a settlement agreement for agreed payment amount and payment schedule under Amendment Cost Sharing Agreement Southeast Water Purification Plan, restated and amended. Rod, you already talked about this.
We already talked about it. Just one thing of note, we're going to pay the two point one million dollar obligation over ten years. Despite having those funds in the bank, the city of Houston is not charging us interest, and at the encouragement of councilmember Matranga, we looked at the net present value and, uh, will earn four hundred and nine thousand in roughly in interest over the next ten years that, uh, we can put towards other projects.
Great suggestion, Joe. Great suggestion.
Great mayor pro temp. Coming up with great ideas all the time. That's probably the last one he'll ask.
As mayor pro temp, right?
As mayor pro temp.
You may come back around soon enough.
You might have a pro temp.
You'll have another run at it.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Councilmember Ellisore just beat you out of that.
I know, I know. We talked about it.
All right. Item C, consider authorizing a letter of intent with the Friendswood Independent School District regarding the long-term use of approximately twenty-four point six nine acres in the B S and F survey number five, abstract number six twenty-five, Galsen County, Texas, located west of Eldorado Drive, north of Lundy Lane, east of West Parkway Avenue, and south of San Joaquin Parkway, in the district's proposed agriculture science facility.
I want to discuss this.
So, as you well know, or if you don't know, the school district, F I S D, is looking for a bond, uh, election this upcoming November. One of their high priority projects is the replacement of the ag barn off of Baker Road. Um, in, in an effort to assist the district on some additional acreage needed, uh, this property was identified behind the Harvard Church, north of Lundy Lane, that the city had purchased back in twenty fifteen. If this project moves forward and the city council approves this M O U, there will be a subsequent license agreement after the bond election in which we'll outline the details of what F I S D would be responsible for and what the city of Friendswood would be responsible for. Obviously, the benefit of the community is a much-needed educational, uh, piece, uh, for the school district, as well as the extension of utilities and access for the city of Friendswood, making this property more accessible and available for future park land use.
Councilmember Hanks.
So, um, John, I'm going to talk a little bit and make up for the last month that I wasn't here. Um, so I, just not to give anybody heartburn, I am definitely going to support this. But I wanted to talk a little bit about, um, so much of what we do on this dais has to do with growth. You know, everything that we talk about is either trying to, uh, to mitigate growth or plan for growth and to retain our sense of community in this, in this town that we, I know, everybody up here loves. And so many of us up here are, you know, have lived in Friendswood for decades. And, um, I was part of the, um, had the opportunity to be part of the agreement with the drainage district and the school district on the current facility. And so many of us talk about faith, family, and education when we all campaign. We hear about it from our superintendent. We, we hear about it. We've heard about it for years and years. And this agreement that they're currently under is a great example of that. And what you're bringing to us tonight is another great example of that, that I would be honored to help continue. And, um, way back then, when I was a very young school administrator, I had the benefit of, of knowing some, what I think of were giants, you know, people that volunteered in the community and community leaders. And when the, uh, discussion of the need and the desire for a ag facility came up, we, we didn't have the land for it. We didn't have the money for it. And other people start, when those, those monthly meetings between the school district and the city, um, were happening back then, and, you know, and as you talk about your vision and what you're hoping for, and people start problem-solving and talking to their contacts. And so Harold Whitaker came up, you know, to me and said, we might be able to help you with some land. And that's when I first met, um, I'm going to violate something tonight, but that's when I first met Kevin Holland, who we're going to talk about in a few agenda items. Uh, he came up to my office and said, I've heard that you want to do this and, and you might be able to get some land. And we didn't have the money still, though, and he came up with the money, as long as I would keep it anonymous, him being the donor, the benefactor. And that is the reason we have that first, we had that first barn. And, um, but besides Kevin, there were other people that just said faith, family, education. Education was important. And way back when, so I didn't know Thad had come in, but I see him now. So, many, many decades ago, probably before we were born, Thad, superintendents had to be the tax assessor collectors in their town. I'm so glad that, that changed by the time I came around, and I know you are, too. But we used to collect, so the, the school district had the tax office and collected taxes for the city. And then, when the Drainage District, District was formed, collected taxes for the Drainage District because they were already collecting taxes for the school district. And then I know things happen, things change, uh, people change and positions change, and so the city pulled away. And though I argued that all the money that you're spending to the, to the school district to collect taxes is staying in Friendswood with the Friendswood kids, uh, not being dispersed across the county, the dis- I lost that argument, okay? So, I didn't, I didn't win that. So, that's, that's water under the bridge. But we had great, um, people volunteering, community leaders that were looking out to make sure that the other entity was successful, too, because we were all serving the same people, or pretty much the same people. And we wanted to be frugal with our, with our, with our money, frugal, uh, be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, but to retain that sense of community that we want. And it doesn't happen by chance. It doesn't happen because we're all good people, or we're all smart, or we're a, a more affluent community. It doesn't happen for those reasons. It happens because of, of intentional, uh, will by the people who are involved. And so we set our differences aside, or we keep arguing until we come to a, a good agreement. And so when the district now has this, this need, and that program has grown so much over the years, so many kids are part of it, and it teaches so many life lessons, um, that they have this need, and they just can't do everything by themselves, just like the city can't do everything by ourselves. We have so many volunteers. We rely on the school district to help us with things. We rely on the, the Drainage District. They rely on us. And we all need to do that. And so, you know, I'm honored that this is still happening. However this came about, I'm assuming it was during your monthly meetings, uh, when y'all were talking about vision and need and what some solutions were and roadblocks that were happening or whatever, to get what they needed and wanted. And so I'm happy to do this, and I, I just want to encourage all of us to continue that because this is a special place, but it will only remain special for the people that are here if we work together in trying to, to keep our community with the values that we, that attracted all of us to move here. So, you know, I'm definitely going to support it, and I hope everyone does.
You want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
I guess I had one more comment, just, just to remind everybody. It wasn't just a couple of meetings ago, when, when we discussed the master, the master parks plant, we had a number of residents from nearby this acreage that came in and, and talked about their concerns about it being a park and the large amount of traffic that a park might bring in and the use of said park, uh, councilmember El- um.
He was a skateboarder.
Yes. Uh, I was trying to, I was struggling, was it skateboarding or skating?
Skateboarder.
Yeah. So, you know, we discussed that and, you know, didn't know what to do with it. This seems like a great win-win situation to address some of the local residents' concerns and using property that's, quite honestly, kind of landlocked, uh, back there. Anyway, that was the only comment I had.
Mayor.
Councilmember Ross.
Thank you. Uh, Marad, I think it was understood that this is basically a non-binding letter of intent that, to the extent that if there is an opportunity to work with the school district, that, that we can work with the school district on some form of lease agreement for this property, correct?
Correct. We agree to agree should the bonds pass.
Right. And, and to the extent that there will be some negotiation, whether it's monetary or otherwise, on the improvement of the property and/or the facilitation of the city being able to utilize the property that's not being utilized by the school district.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that was clear to everybody. And the audience didn't have the benefit of, uh, our internal discussions and the maps, uh, to that extent, so.
Yes, and the maps are in the back of material if anyone cares to look, but yes, you are, you are correct.
Trish, you had me in hello, and I'll second your motion.
Did we get a motion?
I, I'm, I'm.
I'll second it.
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. All in favor? To be discussed for a break. All right. Item D, consider authorizing a tender release and substitution agreement with Liberty Mutual Insurance Company and Westbrook Contractors LLC for the Blackhawk Boulevard Reconstruction Phase Two Repackage B Project. Rod, you got a quick overview on this one?
Yes, sir. You may recall, city engineer, director of engineering, Hill Arias, mentioned this during the C I P update earlier tonight. This is the final agreement with Liberty Mutual to get Westbrook out there. They're the emergency contractors that took the place of Triple B, uh, to complete the, I want to say, the east, the eastern half of Blackhawk Boulevard, button that up so that we can go out for bids to do the final phase two C.
I move.
Second.
Motion to a second, all in favor? Let's get that work done.
Go, go, go. Right.
Item E, uh, I'll make this motion. I, I move that we elect councilmember Ellisore as our mayor pro temp.
Second.
So.
Everybody's seconded that. How many seconds can you write down in a little box? Okay, well, your choice. All right. Hey, before we vote on this, I just want to say a couple more words about mayor pro temp, Matranga, and, uh, great job, Joe. Uh, you know, I, I think, uh, trying to think, I've had seven mayor pro temps as the mayor up here, and every one has done great work. Um, a few surprised me and, and, but Joe did not surprise me. Joe was, Joe's always, uh, very intelligent, uh, reads everything, comes prepared. So, he always is coming up with out-of-the-box solutions like, hey, two point one million dollars, if they're giving us ten years, why don't we split it up? So, uh, that was, that was great. That was just, uh, one example of all the great work that you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You, you're always there, uh, filling in for me. I, I apologize profusely when I have to miss a meeting and you have to bear the burden of, you know, hurting these.
But we had a deal. You could not take any vacations and be gone anytime we were doing the second graders at city council. You handled that so well, and they, they, that, no, I couldn't have done that.
Second graders are a lot easier shepherd than these six people, let me just tell you. All right, so, uh, I got a motion. I got six seconds. Um, all in favor? You can vote for it.
Respectfully abstaining.
Abstaining counts as a no vote, according to our rules, so, okay. All in favor, all right. Mayor Pro Temp Ellisore. I'll get used to saying that.
Congratulations. Thank you, Joe.
Heavy as the head. All right. Item F, consider the naming of the bridge connecting Old City Park to Stevenson Park in honor of former Friendswood mayor Kevin Holland. Want to give a quick overview, Marad, or should I?
Uh, you're welcome to. The, the bridge in question was built in twenty seventeen, if I recall correctly. Uh, we acquired using parkland funds in the twenty thirteen bond program, uh, the property necessary to connect Old City Park to Stevenson Park. Uh, Mayor Holland at the time was instrumental in negotiating that deal with the landowners, as well as ensuring that that project continued to be pushed forward, uh, and connecting those two, those two parks. Uh, you may recall, Mark Clark owned a house just on the other side of Wining Road that, uh, prevented this, uh, this transaction from moving forward. I will tell you, the bridge is utilized heavily by people that walk between both parks or jog. I jog on at least three or four times a day. No, several times throughout the week, uh, because I need to burn a lot of calories, but, um, it's, Mayor.
Well, uh, yes, I, I submitted the application for this. Uh, Kevin Holland was my mayor when I was first on city council. I was part of the, the, the council that, uh, put that bridge in, so I'm proud to be part of that. But, uh, you know, I, in, in my application on Kevin, you know, I, I, I mentioned, you know, all his great services, mayor. Trish has alluded to all the things that he's done that he does not desire credit for. And, uh, you know, we forget sometimes, he was nine years on planning and zoning before he came to the dais as, as our mayor for six years. So, a lot of great work that Kevin has done, and so, uh, I, I, I submitted this because he's very deserving. So, I will make the motion on this item, unless anybody has any further comment?
Well, I just would say for, for everybody, I think we know here, we discussed it in our workshop, but maybe everybody doesn't know. There's a long, kind of, I won't say longstanding, but there's been a, a tradition of naming, uh, I think some items as a tree for ex-mayor Kim Brizendine. There's a soccer field, uh, for ex-mayor David Smith. So, I mean, this is not a one-off. This is a his, what?
Former, not ex.
Oh, sorry, former.
Ex. Well, I just want to say, I've made it clear even at the workshop that I, I just don't, do not like, uh, naming anything, bridges, roads, buildings after elected officials. Uh, it's a privilege and an honor to be able to be elected and serve Friendswood and give back to this community, and that is the reward. Uh, if you've spent your entire career and, uh, worked for Friendswood in some fashion or way, like Chief Wieners, yeah, I'm going to support you for the naming, but I didn't support the, the Friendswood Lakes naming. I supported Tom Burke's naming over here because he built the gazebo inside of the park. So, this has nothing to do with Kevin Holland or anybody else. I know that when, uh, we were naming the, uh, Imperial Estates Drainage, uh, after, uh, ex- mayor, mayor pro temp, I mean, mayor emeritus, mayor emeritus Whitaker, Kevin Holland called me and he, and he asked me what I thought about it, and I said, Kevin, I just really don't like naming these things after, uh, uh, city elected officials. And he agreed with me. He goes, I don't like that either. And I said, but, hey, look, he put in the time, he did the dedication, and I'll support naming the Whitaker Detention Basin, the Whitaker Detention Basin. But I just, I just do not feel like, just because we're privileged enough to be elected by the people of Friendswood, that, that, that is the reward. And, and that's just the way I feel about it. So, I, I just don't, I didn't support Schroeder Lake. That is the reward and, and that's just the way I feel about it. So, I, I just don't, I didn't support Schroeder Lake. I don't know, maybe, uh, as some kind of a, uh. I don't, I, I, I just don't like to do that.
Understood, and I think every one of those mayors that's been mentioned would say the same thing. They don't want anything named after them. I'll say it right now, don't name anything after me. But, uh, eventually I'll be out of this seat and, you know, you guys can discuss it then, but, uh. I, uh, any other comments, any other?
Mayor, we, we got some supplemental information prior to the meeting that. Makes in light of the fact that we're discussing this a, a little premature, I think. It is very important that anybody that's going to be considered to have the naming standard of Friendswood and/or anything named after him be. Without a doubt above reproach. I think there's a, a bit of a moment we need to look at. Do our due diligence and, and, and make sure we're a hundred percent on board with this. I'm, I'm like Robert too, as far as I think elected officials do it for. Just the service, but at the same time. Is, is, is imperative that everything about it be above reproach, uh, during your tenure and after. So I, I think those are something that we need to look at and I, I would like to, I know you've got a motion on the floor, but I would like to move that, uh. We move this to, to the next available council meeting to have a further discussion time period because we've got some supplemental information I'd like to review with y'all.
Was that a motion?
Effectively.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion to second to table this item.
Dog, postpone it.
Postpone it to the next available, uh, September meeting, the first September meeting.
Meeting, okay. All in favor of tabling to September eighth? Opposed to postponing till September eighth? Okay, table motion fails. Uh, I have a motion on the item. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? Five to two. All right, uh. Robert's kicking me under the table because he needs to take a break and I may disagree with that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let's do a quick, uh, I always say five minutes, I know it's, let's give me back a ten-tail, please, if we can possibly. Get out of Robert's way, please. All right, we're back, back to work. Item thirteen, city council proposed ordinances and resolutions. Who's my sergeant at arms? Chief. Chief Rogers, Rhonda Blaskis, uh. All right, you're okay? Item A, consider on second and final reading and ordinance amending chapter eighteen, businesses, article two, peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, itinerant vendors. Division two, registration, section eighteen fifty-eight, hours of the Friendswood City Code to update the days and hours when solicitation is permitted. Uh, I don't think we need a discussion, we did this first reading last month.
Correct.
Motion to approve?
Motion to second, all in favor. B, thirteen B, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five by approving budget amendment eleven. And providing for supplemental appropriations and/or transfers of certain funds.
Motion to, go ahead.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Speed counseling.
Speed counseling, yeah, do we need to take that break? Item thirteen C, consider on first reading and ordinance approving the twenty twenty-five annual update to the services and assessment plan and assessment role for the Friendswood City Center Public Improvement District. Including the collection of annual installments.
So, Mayor, brief background, um, you may recall, we created the Public Improvement District for the Friendswood City Center over a year ago. As a requirement by the state, much like you received the certified tax rolls from the appraisal district for our budget. You're required to receive an annual update to the service and assessment plan reflecting the, the growth from one year to the next. Obviously, there's been a lot of activity out on, uh, Public Improvement District number one, however, most of it's been subterranean, under the ground, so it hasn't really added much to the value of the property just yet. So this is something you'll be doing on annual basis.
And you, I noticed that the assessments kind of went down in general, just slightly, pennies. That's just because the expected costs changed slightly?
Uh, that's the, realizing the, the slight growth in values from those infrastructure improvements, but very, very slight, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor. Item D, consider on first reading and ordinance annexing property owned by the city of Friendswood in accordance with that boundary agreement with the city of League City. Executed on May sixth, twenty twenty-five, said property being approximately one point three three four seven acres out of lots one fifty-nine, one sixty and one seventy. Sloan subdivision according to the plat thereof as filed in volume two fifty-four, pages fifty-three, fifty-four, Galveston County map records.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to second. Just, uh, taking that property out of our ETJ and into our city limits.
That was short-lived. Yeah.
Everybody vote him? You get everybody?
Sally was up, she just.
Sally did.
Sally's second. Yeah, we see the vote as well.
We did vote.
We just voted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I.
I distracted her.
My fault.
You know, if I take a break in the middle of the meeting, I'd lose all.
Raquel, you got everybody on that? Okay.
Sorry.
All right, item E, consider on first reading and ordinance amending chapter two, administration, article two, boards, committees, commissions, division six, Fourth of July Steering Committee. Section two dash fifty-one, created, membership subsection B, membership and division eight, keep Friendswood Beautiful Committee, section two dash sixty-one, created, membership. Subchapter B, membership of the Friendswood City Code to remove residency and business ownership as qualifications for membership.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, just getting involved in the city and just trying to see how all these committees work. Uh, I understand the rationale behind this, especially as it relates to these two committees because they're short members, but I would like to say. I think we can find members inside the city limits of the communities to fill these positions, so I wanted to make sure. That we continue to get out the word that these are positions that are available and open.
I agree with you. I, I think we just need to have this, this opening to allow us to fill positions when we can't. Get those volunteers from inside the city limits, so.
Just give me a chance, Mayor.
I had to ask if this was, would be by invitation only, so that it wouldn't be an open application process where we're looking at people then. Outside of Friendswood, but when we had a need. And I think it was keep Friendswood Beautiful or Fourth of July, I can't remember which one, a couple of years ago.
Fourth of July was the driver for this one.
Someone was gonna step in and really help something that we needed, but they didn't live in Friendswood.
Correct, and they had a business in Friendswood, uh, that paid property taxes to Friendswood.
I think we let them help, but.
We did, and then they, they stopped. Unfortunately, some of, uh, Fourth of July in particular is very much, um. Commitment intensive and it requires a lot of, uh, work and unfortunately they're unable to keep. Of the fifteen-member committee, we have seven vacancies if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and we have some folks that have been volunteering with us, uh, through other organizations, the VFD, through, uh, Fourth of July, coming to the meetings and helping out, though not members of the committee. And this was an opportunity to recognize them as a committee member. Obviously, anybody that's added to any of these committees require council approval, so you're able to vet them, it's not just on automatic, you submit an application, you're gonna be on the, the board or committee. This just allows, uh, the council some flexibility and latitude of approving, uh, others. We did in twenty twenty-two or twenty-one when we made the change to the Fourth of July Steering Committee. Grandfathered anybody that wasn't a resident that's on the committee, because we have a, a number of long-tenured volunteers that don't live in Friendswood, but have been. Volunteering with the committee back when they did live in Friendswood and have so for the last twenty-five years.
And then moved out of the.
And then moved out of the city.
I have some reservations about making this change. I'm not so sure it's that broken. I, I agree with. Councilmember Ross that, you know, we need to work harder and we can, we can do better, uh, about getting volunteers, but. I understand some of the reasons for this. Uh, I've never, I've been to KFB meetings, I've never been to liaison, but I have been. Off and on with the Fourth of July Steering Committee and we do need more people at times. It is intensive, at Fourth of July Day, it's, it is intensive and leading, right, leading right up to that. But with that said, I'm a little, I'm, my concern resolves around, uh, undue influence, somebody, you know, outside of Friendswood. Why, why do they want to come in and volunteer? And do they really have Friendswood's best, best interest at heart? That's, that's my concern. Uh, now with that said, I suspect there's, there's gonna be very few people that want to, that don't live here, that wanna come on our committees. It's gonna, I assume it's gonna be special circumstances, it's not gonna be very many people that then come and then work hard for our betterment. But with that said, I think, like, for example, it was limited to eight. Friendswood residents and people with commercial property here for keep Friendswood beautiful, leaving seven open. I'm just throwing out that I'm more comfortable with something like three people. If we wanted to do three for each one of them. Because again, I just don't think it's gonna be that many people that, that line up, so let's just keep it small. Uh, that helps, that helps solve some of the problem of, of the one or two that have unique circumstances and unique ties to Friendswood. Uh, but I, and I heard what you said, Murad, about the fact is that it's, you know, well, it's gonna come before council. It, it's gonna be hard for us at that point to go, no, I don't want that person on here or really vet them hard. I, I'm just giving you the realities of sitting up here, it's hard to do that without creating an enemy or enemies.
Same, same with say, say, putting a name on something.
Welfare.
Make people feel bad.
Was this initiated by our volunteers? Who initiated this change?
I did, in conjunction with our volunteers, because we've had some members that have been volunteering their time but aren't official committee members. And they had been Friendswood, um, adjacent for a number of years, meaning that they were volunteers with the Volunteer Fire Department and through EMS, volunteers with Rotary. Uh, that they grew up in Friendswood, they just happened to live outside of Friendswood, so, uh. Seeing that we had still seven vacancies on Fourth of July, that was the, the main.
So I think that you should never hamper yourself, you know, put, put a policy in place that works against you. I agree though, and I, I agree a few years ago when we first talked about it, it should be Friendswood residents. But I don't, but I think a policy that would allow invitation by a committee that needs help. To someone outside of the, uh, outside of the city would be an appropriate thing to help those volunteers if they can't find someone.
I'm assuming they can volunteer to participate, they just can't be a voting committee member, so to speak.
Well, I think that's how we've handled, I think that's how they've handled it.
That's what they've been doing.
That's what we've done thus far. At the senior activity center, we had two spots open and we had four very qualified individuals who live in Friendswood who wanted to be on the committee. And I just wanted to make all of them on the committee. But we didn't do that, but the two were invited to please come, you just won't be able to vote.
Yeah.
Uh, but they, their input was, uh, and is always welcome. Um, we did choose two and they're, they're great, but all four were awesome. And I wanted all four of them, but.
Is it a quorum issue? Is it a quorum issue for voting on things or is it just filling the spots?
It's filling the spots and getting, uh.
These volunteers actually do most of the work.
Yeah, I know. I know like KFB especially.
These are not legislative committees, these are not like planning and zoning, you know.
So, they, I mean, we don't even have to have a. I mean, they could be, they could volunteer on a committee, right, without having any decision-making.
Short at, at Fourth of July and KFB?
Yes, sir.
I can tell you the history on the Fourth of July, even before James's time, you have people who grew up here.
Yeah.
They may still own a business here, they potentially have moved away, they wanna stay engaged and involved. Yeah, if you kind of look around, we're the only daytime program in the area. Y'all are wondering how come we all, the dignitaries come to Friendswood for breakfast? Well, because we're the only, only thing happening. So I feel like if we have folks who want to participate and are dedicated and that the committee that's in place. Wants them to come on board and especially there's always a council liaison for that group, I mean, I think we've got plenty of oversight. I, I'm with Trish on this, I don't want to turn someone away just because they don't live in Friendswood anymore. You've got people who were on that committee for years.
That grew up here.
That grew up here, they don't live here anymore, but they still wanna be part of it. I don't wanna tell those people no, and I don't wanna tell them they can't vote if there's a vote. I, I, I think that, you know, we're talking about being welcoming, I always. Go back to the Quakers, if the Quakers hadn't had open arms, none of us would be here today. Because they, they were welcoming to folks coming in, if they had shut the door behind themselves, we would not be here. So I would rather see us be open to this. Yes, my preference would be to fill it up with Friendswood residents if we possibly can, or people who own businesses here in Friendswood, because either way, they're paying taxes into Friendswood. But to Mike's point, these guys aren't setting up ordinances or laws or anything, it, it's a, KFB and Fourth of July, it's, it's fun stuff, no offense, but it's fun stuff.
It's hard work stuff.
It's a lot of hard work on Fourth of July.
Side of the road's hard, I don't do it.
Murad, how, how many, I assume you know how many of these people are volunteering but aren't committee members now currently, so I mean, if they were brought on board, would this fill the committees?
No, this would fill one or two positions, we'd still have five vacancies, so.
I mean, it's not solving the bigger problem, correct? It's, it's a special circumstance for a couple of people that wanna help and I wanna continue to involve them and bring them along, but I mean, it's not solving the problem necessarily.
KFB has two, has two openings, one of which is in the process of being filled, because they have some requirements of meeting attendance and events attendance kind of things. But, so it's not like out of fifteen, there's two open slots on KFB.
Correct.
And, and you're talking allowing up to seven non-residents. I, I just don't think we need to do that, that's just my opinion, I think. You know, the last thing I want is a, and, and here's my concern. The, the last thing I want, and I, and I grant you, this is way out there and it's not likely to ever happen, but I worry about it a little bit, and that is. The landscaper from Webster, who's been trying to get to know people in Friendswood and get business in Friendswood and get to know the city in Friendswood, says, hey, there's an opening. And they fill out a volunteer request and they're the only ones, then, yeah, the, as KFB is an example, they would have to look at that person. And if they, they're the only ones that have applied, they're gonna take that person and, and they're not there for the right reasons. Again, I think that the chance of that and the risk of that's really small, but, but why? For two openings, why, why change things for KFB? I understand Fourth of July is a little unique because it's quiet, like winter, they don't even meet. Uh, but they get, they get it hard when they, when it's time. Uh, I just, I just think, you know, it's too many, to open for, because it's open on Fourth of July, they can have everybody but the chair and vice chair. Is the way the ordinance reads, and then KFB can have up to seven non-residents and can't be chair and vice chair, is that right?
Correct, and, and y'all are welcome to, it's not a one-size-fits-all, so if you want a different set of standards for Fourth of July versus KFB, that's, you're welcome to do that. Maybe make a requirement that if they don't live here currently, that they either grew up here or that they, um.
Grandfathered in.
Grand, grandfathered, which helps the current grandfathered in members, uh, but it doesn't address those that have been volunteering that aren't official members of the committee.
Now, I thought the chair would either be a resident or a business.
Correct, that is a requirement, yes.
Using that together, but you're right.
Correct. You are correct.
Just remember, this, this is not forcing us to put people from outside of town on these committees. This is just opening the door that they can apply and be considered.
Flexibility.
Flexibility, I, I don't think flexibility is a bad thing, I think, yes, uh, if you wanna apply more oversight to. If you wanna have Murad wave a flag every time that we have an item on the agenda to approve a person that's not a resident, well, we can have him do that. And then we can all say, well, okay, we are approving this person that's a non-resident for this committee. But I don't think that's that important, I, I just don't think, I, you know, I think this is a, this just allows us more flexibility. It's these two committees that are typically.
Workhorse committees.
Workhorse committees, so.
And big, they're like.
Anybody else have anything, uh, because I'm ready to move forward. Sorry, talk enough. I'm gonna make the motion that we, we approve this.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor. Opposed? Okay, five to two. I remember when I lost a vote.
Not, not my, not, not my first vote.
I lived a long time.
Well, you're not Mayor Pro Tem anymore, so.
It's just this side of the table.
Consider a res, F, consider a resolution adopting amended rules and procedures for city council meetings. Did we change many of our rules? We didn't change, we have a vice mayor pro tem that we can appoint now if necessary.
Correct, and then we also made changes to reflect the new state law requirement for posting, so council members have an increased, uh, runway, so to speak. You have an earlier deadline by which to get items to us. Um, and then, yes, sir.
I was just gonna make a motion to.
I will shut up then.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I read the changes.
Motion to second, all in favor. Very good, okay, consent agenda, I need a motion approving the consent agenda, items fourteen A through fourteen C and fourteen E through fourteen M. A variation of item fourteen D will be considered at the August twenty-fifth special meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor. Things adjourned.